First order business is the minutes in the last meeting. Paul?
Yes, that was, the minutes were fine.
Okay, good. All right, I got a motion to accept the minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
The motions, the minutes are accepted. Next order business is the meeting for next month.
And the, no, it's in the backseat.
Paul, that mind's about the backseat. Pay attention here, Paul. We can hear you in the backseat.
Can I just remind everybody to mute themselves if they're not speaking?
Okay.
I muted her.
All right. The meeting next month is the 12th of October, it's a Monday. So it's a Columbus Day. So we're gonna have to move it to, I guess, the next Monday, the 19th, or the day after Tuesday. So what's convenient for everybody?
Let me just quickly look.
Paul, I gotta unmute yourself.
Okay, I did.
Okay.
All right.
Talking about the meeting for next month.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's fine.
The 19th or what, or 13th?
Either or.
Yeah, you said that you wanted to move it because of Columbus Day, right?
Yeah, hold on, I got Lenny on the phone, hold on.
Yeah, I'm fine doing it the day after, if we can do that. That would be October 13th.
Hold on, Paul, you and Ben. I have Lenny on the phone, he can hear everything that we're saying. Whatever we can hear him. So what we'll do is just continue, and then when we come to any of that discussion, I'll have, I'll work on the, with him on the phone, okay? All right, we'll do it that way. You can hear what we're saying, right, Lenny? Okay, all right, hold on then, and just stay where you are, hold on. All right, we said next meet, the next month meeting is gonna be on the 19th, because the 13th is a holiday.
The 12th is a holiday.
I'm sorry, the 12th is, 13th is, everybody seems to wanna do it on the 19th. Okay, that's good for you?
Yeah.
That'll be it, then it'll be, it'll be on October 19th. Okay. All right, first order business is 22 Sky Lane. Is there anybody here, Tony, I guess, representing Horizon?
Who is it for?
Kelly, for Horizon, for 22 Sky Lane, the Tower Promise. Is there anybody here?
That's gonna be, let's see.
Tony, I guess.
Yep, Leslie Snyder.
Is she here?
Yep, I just let her in.
Okay.
Leslie, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
Hi, Miss Snyder. Bob D. here. We got your application to renew this for another year.
Uh, yes, we.
Go ahead.
No, I don't know if you want me to explain why we need the renewal, but.
Oh yeah, I'd like you to explain, yeah.
Yeah, so as you probably recall, we have a temporary tower at the site, which is providing unnecessary coverage to the businesses, the residents, and emergency service personnel of the town. We're waiting for a replacement tower for the existing WHUD tower. They started to do the work, and then COVID struck, and they couldn't get people to come back to complete the tower. So we're just asking for a year extension. We hope they'll have the tower. You know, as soon as they have it completed, we'll take down our tower. We just are at the mercy of COVID. I'm glad to see that all of you are well under these trying times. But apparently, it's been very difficult getting the necessary labor, et cetera, due to the pandemic.
Yeah, I went up there last week, I saw the tower was up, but I don't see anybody working.
Yeah, there's a tower up, but I guess they have to add to it and do some other work. And they need special personnel, which apparently come from a different area, which they've had a hard time, apparently, getting back up to the site.
Okay.
They tell us they're aiming for the second and third quarter of 2021, it'll be completely finished. You know, we're just one tenant of several on that tower.
Right. I know, I hope so, Leslie, because you and I were both at that pre-application meeting. They told me only six months. I went to the fourth year, so.
Yeah.
A little longer than expected.
For sure, for sure. Believe me, we wanna, you know, we wanna mobilize as soon as we can, and be able to use our temporary tower somewhere else that's necessary. So we appreciate your patience, but we just ask for the, for a year at this time.
Any other, any questions from the board?
I don't see it being a problem.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, any other question? Paul, it's on you, Paul. Any questions?
No.
Got it, nobody? Okay. Lenny, any other questions? Okay. At this time, I'm gonna ask for a, I'll make a, I'll make a motion that we approve the year extension. I got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
I have unanimous. Okay, Miss Snyder, you're all set.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully you won't see, hopefully you won't see you next year.
Okay, I'm with you, but stay well under these trying times. Thank you very much. Thank you to all of you.
Okay, bye.
Bye-bye.
All right, all right, that one's approved, my extension for a year. Second order business is 699 Old Albany Post Road. Chris Flag, I guess, is Mr. Spencer here, is the architect, is he here?
Glenn, are you there?
I'm Mrs. Spence, Spencer, I'm looking for the architect.
David.
What's his name, David Spencer or something?
David Spence.
Spence?
I am here.
You're here?
Yes.
Okay, um.
Hi, David.
Hi, Kelly.
Now, last, last month's meeting, we didn't have the, the denial from the, from the building inspector, I mean, from code enforcement. We have it now, and basically, you know, there's a couple of reasons for denial. Once, one, because you're pre-existing non-conforming, and then you're gonna be over the 25%. So you're gonna need a permit for the first one, and a variance for the second. I don't know what other variances you may need, but the problem is, you state that you're, you're over the thousand square feet, and you're over three, 3,000 square feet of space, so you have to go before the planning board. And you're gonna have to get a site plan approval button from the planning board. You understand that?
I do now.
You do now, okay. But unfortunately, since this is a, you know, we didn't have that, and I just try to not hold you up, but I can't, there's nothing I can do about that. That's the building, code, zoning code forces his decision. So what I'm gonna do, it is a public hearing, so Kelly, is there anybody here who wants to speak on this while we have them?
Yes, I know of a few people.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Neil Zuckerman.
Before, before he starts, just one thing, I wanna ask you one question, Mrs. Spence. I looked at, at your plans, and you said, you said it says proposed addition. You're not touching the first house. The first house is like over 2,600 square feet, correct? The original house?
The, it is connected by a covered pergola, which by definition makes it an addition.
It's almost, almost this, what, almost 17 something odd, 100 square feet building with a bathroom, bedroom, kitchen, and living area, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the only that's connecting it is a pergola walkway?
Correct.
I have a question, Bob.
Oh, wait, wait, one second. Go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, my question is.
Paul, hold on one second. Go ahead.
Oh, okay.
He's got his answer. I'm trying to find out how this is connected.
How to dis.
How it's connected.
Yeah, so there's a covered walkway that is basically a pergola, but it has a roof overhead. And that's to, the, the idea is to allow the owners to walk back and forth between the, the two structures during inclement weather, number one. Number two was, because the house, it's sort of architectural character en masse, we did not feel that putting a, you know, addition globbed onto the house was appropriate. So what we decided to do was basically create the addition, almost look like a detached structure, even though technically it's not, in the form of a barn to house the, the program that the owner wishes to have. So basically, what we're trying to do is create a pair of buildings, so to speak, on the site. However, as we understand the way the code reads, and many towns are like this, it still qualifies as an addition because of, because of the covered connection.
Adam, is that correct? I don't think that's true. Adam, do you know the section of the code that, that you're quoting from?
I can find it, I can try to find it, but basically, it reads that, you know, it can have open walls, but because the cover, because it has a roof cover, it's considered a connector, and therefore an addition. I spoke to the building inspector specifically about this, and he agreed that it is considered an addition. A lot of times, it works in reverse, where people get sort of penalized because they have a connection like this, and it's, and it makes an addition bigger. In this case, we were utilizing that to, because the addition, to make it an addition.
Right. I see you have a fifth bedroom. Are you gonna have to, you're gonna have to get a county health approval?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
And that's in the works.
Okay, Paul, do you have any questions? Paul?
You're muted, Paul.
You're muted, Paul.
Uh, my question was basically similar to Vinnie's. I was gonna ask him by whose definition is this an addition, because to me, it's two separate structures.
Right. All right, well, this is gonna have to, this is gonna have to a planning board anyway, but seeing that it's a public hearing, I just wanna give people a chance to talk. Kelly, is anybody in the audience who wants to speak on this? Kelly? You're muted. Kelly, you're muted. Kelly, you have to unmute yourself.
Neil Zuckerman wants to.
Okay, put him in, please.
Go up to the floor, Mr. D.
Hi, how are you? Go ahead.
Good evening. So I, I come, can you hear me okay?
Yes, good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I come before this group not as the chair of the planning board, although when I did see this initially, I was surprised that it was not coming before the planning board, and I appreciate, Chair, that it will now come before that board. I come before you instead as a 15-year neighbor of this property and a 28-year resident of Garrison. I have three concerns with this, with this development, as I've read about it. And I, I must admit, and I'm apologizing in, in advance, that this will not come across as very neighborly. It is not my intention that it comes across that way, but these are three sincere observations from someone who has spent a lot of time in the zoning code for the past nine years on the planning board. Maybe not as, as well as Mr. Watson, but a decent steward of it, and I try to do that. I'd say also that in my tenure at the planning board, I think I've shown, and we've shown, a rare denial of, of activities. So I think I have a general appreciation for property rights. So I, with that in mind, I'd like to just make three comments. One, this spot where this house exists is a very tight corner. It has a stone wall that has existed since the 19th century, and visibility is very poor. And so any structure that further obscures the visibility of this corner, I think is a material safety hazard. That's one, and that's the least of my three points. The second point is that I believe in either 2005 or 2006, a conservation easement was placed on this property by the previous owner, that the, that the, the doctors bought it from. I went to the Hudson Highlands Land Trust party to celebrate this, this easement that was placed on this property. That easement obviously encumbered the property without further development, and it was clearly done for both tax purposes, that the previous owner benefited from, as well as the charitable gift that the Hudson Highlands Land Trust received. I am concerned that even though that easement, I believe, was put on the additional piece of property that the, that the owner owned at the time, that anything that is done to infringe upon that easement and harm what is a historic building from the 19th century, would I think be in contravention of that easement. The third concern I have is the most dramatic in my, my, my commentary. And it will also get personal, and I apologize for this, but I can only use my powers of observation to share with you, my fellow members of, volunteers of our committees of our town. The, I, I live on this road, I walk by this house every day, long before COVID. The owners are rarely at this house. There will be weeks, maybe even months, where anybody will actually be in this house. And that is not a dig at the, the owners. I, I've met them once or twice when they've been at the house, but it is, it is a problem in the, in the sense of the following. The house across the street, which was reconstructed, is owned by Mr. Davis's ex-wife, as are the properties that Mr. Chris Davis owns across the way. The, as I understand, the Davises are lifelong childhood friends with the owner of this house. I'm getting somewhere, I promise. The house across the street is treated as a permanent Airbnb unit. The house across the street is listed as probably the, considered the most stylish, apparently, Airbnb in New York State. It is basically operating as a hotel, as are at least two other properties on Mr. Davis's property that are across the street. My concern is that this extension, or addition, or whatever you wanna call it, for a house that is never used, or rarely used, by my eyeballing as a neighbor, will then become, in contravention of our rural residential zoning, will become another Airbnb property, and therefore become another hotel. To use a phrase, if it walks like a duck and talks like a duck, it is a duck. And therefore, if it becomes therefore another hotel property that has constant traffic in and out, as does the house across the street, owned by the applicant's close family, friends, I fear as a local member of the community, that having cars coming in constantly in a, effectively a rental property, is a contravention of our zoning, and certainly is a concern for safety. As, as John Van Tassel is on the, on the call, I'll also state that I do believe this is something at a town level we have to start addressing. COVID notwithstanding, it becomes a safety issue. So I submit to those three concerns to you, my, my friends, and I appreciate the work you're doing for us on behalf of the town, and I appreciate your, your listening to my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Kelly, is there anybody else who'd like to speak on this issue before you, Paul?
Um, Andrew, would you like to talk?
David Spence would like to talk as well.
Okay, Andrew, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Okay, would you like to say something?
Yes, I'd just like to ask about the, the conservation agreement, and why they would be able to develop on the land if there is a conservation agreement on it.
Mr. Howard, I don't, I don't know anything about a conservation agreement. We don't have any copy of that. Mrs. Zuckerman seems to know a lot more about it, but we're not gonna decide anything here tonight, okay? What I'm gonna ask the board to do is to send this over to the planning board. It has to get a site plan review, which means that all the questions that you have here could go, also go to the planning board. There'll be no decision, there'll be so, no decision here tonight, but I just know it was a public meeting, and so I wanted to make sure everybody had a chance to say what they had wanted to say.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much indeed.
You're welcome. Anybody else, Kelly?
Um, David Spence would like to answer some of those questions. David?
Yeah. I guess for starters, I apologize for not putting this in front of the planning board. I had numerous conversations with the building department specifically to find out what the protocols on submissions were. I submitted a preliminary set of drawings so that it was, so that I could understand exactly what we were supposed to do. My understanding was that we were to apply to the zoning board for a variance application because the property was non-conforming in terms of its size, and the fact that the structure was non-conforming due to setbacks. That said, here we are, and I'm finding out about the planning board. That's fine. We will go through the procedures on that. To just sort of address Mr. Zuckerman's comments, I guess I'll just go in order. And again, we can talk about this more in the planning board meeting, but in terms of corner visibility, the, this, the addition is pretty far back from both Old Albany Turnpike and Travis Corners Road. It, it does not impact the stone wall whatsoever, and turning the corner and visibility, there is no, absolutely no safety issues there. Number two, the easement. Yes, there is a conservation easement on the property. However, it does allow for expansion to the house in certain directions. We are currently in a conversation with the, the conservation group to, to remedy, to work through that, rather. And then, number three, it is not the owner's intent to use this house and property as an Airbnb at all. They do have, she has a practice in New York City, and as does he, they do go there practically every weekend prior to Corona virus, and now they've been spending actually more time up there. They do have an extended family that they wish to extend their hospitality to, thus the, the addition for the addition, for the extra space. The house being older, the bedrooms are very small in nature, so when they do have family, it's very difficult to have them living in the house. So those are the reasons for this, and how we're going to address some of this. But I, I don't want the Airbnb case to be this sort of, putting out some kind of fear that this is what the owner's intent is.
My suggestion was, my suggestion was, before you go to planning board, you get the conservation thing straightened out. You know, I mean, that would just up to you, but if you can get it straightened out before you met with them, you'd probably be better off.
And that's fine. It's just that everybody wants everybody else to approve first before they will look at things, and so we kind of get in a pinball machine situation. So that's fine.
It's only a suggestion on my part. You do what you want.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I appreciate it.
Okay. All right. At this point in time, does anybody else, Kelly, or before I close, close the public hearing?
I wouldn't be, be prepared to do anything on this application until the conservation easement is worked out. Obviously, that's a big deal.
Well, my, my intentions was to close the public hearing, then make a vote that this be sent to the planning board.
Okay.
And get, and get a site plan review, and come back to us, because it doesn't make any sense. You should go to them and get all, and let them review it, and get, and tell us what the problem is, and what they think they need, any more variances, running up like that. They may, they may make that, they may make a decision they need another variance or something. So.
Yeah, yeah, just, so I'm clear, so, so we're clear. They definitely do need to apply according to the code enforcement officer to the planning board for site plan approval. I think it would be appropriate, my recommendation would be, to ask the planning board for a report based on their review of the site plan application. And we should simply be asking for a report. The reason is, is that the planning board, at the end of the day, cannot grant site plan approval for the project until they get variances from the zoning board. And as I understand it, because there's going to be an increase of more than 25% in, in area, they actually will need a special permit from the zoning board. So basically, you know, what we're doing is, we're, we're asking, as the applicant agreed to do, make his application to the planning board for site plan review. With the board's permission, I will write a letter to the planning board asking for a report based upon their analysis, and then they will come back before the zoning board, because the planning board will need variances from the zoning board before they can even grant site plan approval.
Right, okay. I'd like a report from them. Like you said, I'd do, write that to the board, to the planning board, I appreciate it.
So Adam, it's Z-U-C-K-E-R-M-A-N when you send that letter to the planning board?
Got it.
That was a joke. I was just joking around.
Okay, all right, no problem. Okay, at this point in time, can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
We do have a James Rook that wants to speak.
Oh, sure, okay. Go ahead.
James, are you there? James?
Yeah, yeah, hold on. What we're gonna do, we're gonna send this to the planning board.
Are you there, James?
Yeah, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
I, I appreciate it. I'm also a resident of Old Albany Post Road, so that's why I'm on the call today. Just a couple of things. Obviously, the convention, the conservation easement's the most critical thing here. I know that's under control. David, obviously, take your word on what you're saying about the Airbnb situation. No reason not to believe that, but I do wanna say that it is a concern for me if there is a situation where we're creating a new kind of central business district at the top of Old Albany Post Road. I have two young kids, and the Airbnb that's already there, which is a full-time Airbnb, has constant kind of people in and out, and if we were creating a corner that had two commercial businesses, it would feel problematic for a bunch of reasons. The reason I am concerned is, my understanding is that there's activity taking place at the golf course, where the golf course, nine of those holes, may be changed for additional purpose. So, you know, based on the relationship of the owners and the Davises, who make very good business out of one Airbnb, it'd make a lot of sense to create a second Airbnb to take advantage of the new commercial opportunity of the golf course. So again, speculation, and David, no reason to not take your, your word there, but I'm assuming therefore, the, you know, as part of this, the, the family would be willing to kind of make the commitment that there would be no Airbnb activity at the property.
Well, we, I don't know the legalities of that, but let me explain to you what's gonna happen. I'm gonna close this public hearing, and then I'm gonna, the board asks for advice, we're gonna vote to send this to the planning board. Okay, this is gonna go to the planning board. They're gonna review it all, they're gonna check into the conservation easement thing and everything else like that. They're gonna send a report back to us, okay, like their findings. And from there, we have another public hearing, and you'll be able to speak again, okay? And at that public hearing, we'll have to decide how many variances are needed, if the variances are granted, so. And then if those are granted, it'll still have to, there's still the, the planning board still have to approve. Is that correct, Adam?
Yeah, at the end of the day, the, the site plan approval from the planning board.
Right, okay. So, so there's plenty of time to, you know, this is, nothing's gonna be decided here tonight, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, David, thank you.
Anybody else, Kelly?
Nobody seems to.
Nobody? Okay, all right. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll move.
All right, I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Vinnie, aye? No, Lenny. Voting again. Okay. Lenny votes against closing the public hearing, because we're sending this to the planning board. Okay, okay, so we got four in favor of closing, one against, so Lenny, lose. All right, so at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion to send this to the planning board, and our attorney to draft a letter to the findings, or the findings, and ask for a report from them.
I'll second.
Paul in favor?
Aye.
Planning board, all right. Lenny, you in favor of sending the planning board? Okay, Lenny's in favor of sending the planning board, so anonymous, and it goes anonymous to the planning board. Okay, Mr. Spence, is he still there?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so you pretty much understand what's going on here?
Yes.
And you'll, you'll take care of it from there, and then we'll see you when you get done with them.
We'll see, we'll see you in a couple of months.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Right, okay. All right, the third item, uh, let's see. The third item is Weaver and Laura Cummings, 21, 71 South Mountain Pass, Burr Garrison. A lot line change. It's, I guess it would be Mr. Watson. Mr. Watson, you ever sending him?
I'm here, good evening.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, thank you.
Explain to us what your goal here is?
Yes, may I share a screen?
Sure. Want to put him on there? Oh, there you are. I thought you'd be in your apartment in New York.
I just got the building permit. I just got the building permit.
Oh, did you?
Permit in New York, and it is in Phillips Town, I'll tell you that.
And you thought we were hard.
That's right. I'm going to put this on screen two, which is the screen, and I'm going to, what's that I'm trying to do now?
When you move down, you're going to have to eat out, I guess, if I take out.
Hang on just a second while I figure out what I didn't do right here.
You're good, we can see you.
But I wanted to show you a map, and I'm having...
Well, this is only for completion.
All right, let me explain. What I have is...
Yeah, go ahead.
What I have is a seven, a seven, two parcels totaling 17 acres. One of the...
Sorry, go ahead.
One of the parcels has two houses on it. This property is located on a private road called South Mountain Pass Spur. It runs northerly from South Mountain Pass and dead ends at this property. There were two houses legally constructed on this piece of property and on this one 11-acre, 11-acre piece. The owners and the owner's family have been there for quite a long time, and they would like to divide the property so that the houses are on separate parcels. I think the idea is that they will give each one of their children one of these houses. Of course, that's a little bit irrelevant, but it's just the plan. To accomplish this, they acquired another six acres of vacant property from Lars Kulis Side, I'm sorry, another four acres of property. So they have a total of 17 acres, they have two houses, they're in a 10-acre zone, so the long and short of that is, they don't have enough land for two houses. They also don't have enough frontage for two houses. So on one of the lots, we're asking for area variance from 10 acres down to four acres, or a variance of about, about seven acres. And that is so that we can encapsulate the things that are necessary for that house. The driveway is going to be shared, septic system is with that smaller lot, and all the other facilities associated with that house. The geometry is such, which is why I wish I could have shown, I could show you my map, is the geometry is such that the other land surrounding the second house gets bigger, and it actually is going to be 12 acres, and there's no practical way to make the smaller lot bigger and sort of split the difference. So we're asking for a variance on the first lot of six, of seven acres from 10, I guess the variance comes down, it's, the variance is from the 10-acre lot to a 4.9 acre, 4.3 acre lot. So that would be a, was it, 5.7 acre variance. On the other lot, we don't, we don't have a total of enough frontage. We have about 450, 400, about 475 feet of frontage, and the way we have to split the frontage, we're going to split it down the driveway so they can share the driveway. So one ended up with a little more than 300, and the other ends up with, I believe it is 169 feet of frontage. So we're asking for a second variance, one variance for the smaller lot for area, the second variance for the larger, the larger lot for frontage. And if this is granted, there'll be no physical change, we'll be able to share the driveway, all the facilities that are necessary for each of the lots will be on their own lot. And while I am asking for two variances here, I want to point out that we're also removing one of the non-conformities, and that's having two houses on one lot. That's not, there are circumstances where that is legal in this town, but it's not legal in this, in this circumstance. So we're basically trying to minimize the number of variances that we need, minimize the number of non-conformities, and accomplish for our client, the subdivision, such that they can split the property into two, one, into two, so each lot has one, has one house.
Let me ask you a question. You have 71 South Mountain Pass, South Mountain Pass Spur. Does the other house have a number on it, or, you know, you're trying to say?
I think it's been considered one address, but I can check through you.
Right, right.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure.
Sorry.
Pardon me?
Would it be possible to break it up into two numbers? Why, I mean, if we're going to break it up into two lots, we possibly have two separate addresses.
I think, I think that will happen. I think that the parcel gets an address, and I think the two houses have the, have one, one address. They were actually considered one house, one dwelling unit under the old law. That's how it was approved. So I'm sure that when we subdivide it, we will get another number, and I can, I can inquire about that as to what that number would be.
Okay. Adam, do you have any questions on that, or?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. As I understand it right now, on the larger lot, and I just want to confirm this with Glenn, on the larger lot right now, there are two single-family dwellings? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Maybe I just figured out what I did. I'm going to share my screen now, if that's okay. And we could still talk, sure. You should see this map.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You see the map?
Yes.
Okay. So today, the story is told up here in the colored version up on top. On the left side, you see the two pieces, the way they exist.
Both, they're both, but they were a little tiny sound.
The middle, the middle piece shows the swap we want to make. That's the one that we want to take out of the larger piece and put it with a smaller piece, and we will end up with the third picture, which shows you one of, one large lot and one small lot. So the small lot is, my cursor going over the small lot area, and the, now my cursor going over the large lot area. This line here, where my cursor is running back and forth, that's the original lot line. And so today, the houses are in this one larger lot, and what we want to do is create a second lot, a lot line adjustment, so that each lot can, each house can be on its own lot.
Okay. Let me ask you a good first question.
The other question I had is, with respect to the variance sought for road frontage, maybe if you look at the third colored diagram on the right, just to clarify, which lot, is it the bottom lot that is proposed to have 165 feet of road frontage?
Yes, that's correct.
So that will be the, the new larger lot, will have the 165 feet of road frontage?
Yes. This spot here is the frontage for the, for the parcel two, and parcel one has the, parcel one actually has a little bit more frontage than is, than is required, but we wanted to share the driveway and just made, it made sense to, to, to put the division right down the middle of the driveways that they're going to share and take a little, and ask for a little bit more variance, because if I moved the lot line over, away from the common driveway, to pick up that extra frontage, I would be even asking for an even larger area variance with regard to the area of the smaller lot, because there's nowhere I can make that up.
So are you providing an easement for the house in the back to use the, the common driveway?
And that will be the subject of approval of the planning board. We are here at a reference from the planning board because, because we need variances, but we are there for approval of this lot line adjustment. This is a, this is a large enough adjustment that we require a planning board approval.
Right. Glenn, I guess you got a letter from the planning board, you got a letter from your attorney, I guess, Steve Gabber, in July, speaking to this and referring you to us, and he states something in here about the both requirements, the applicant cannot demonstrate their EBA satisfaction, if the lot line change will not increase the degree of these non-conformities and variances required for them as well. Could you speak to that letter? You know the letter I'm talking about?
Yeah, that's basically our ticket into the, into the zoning board, you know, as obviously you're the zoning board of appeals, and the theory is we have to be denied. So we made an application to the planning board to, to, for this lot line adjustment, knowing full well that they had to deny us, and I think I actually pointed out why they had to deny us. So that's Mr., that's, that's their, that's what is tantamount to their denial.
Okay, all right. Now, there's no other, when is lot lines are changed and so on and so forth? There'll be no other place to develop on this property, will there be?
No, there will not be any other place to develop. No, there's, I mean, we only have, we're in a 10-acre zone, and we only have 17 acres. So if we get, if we won't be able to do it.
Right, okay, just a question. Okay, any board members have any questions? Okay, at this point in time, I'd like to make a motion at the application to accept and, and be set for a public hearing, which would be on April, I'm sorry, October, 19?
19, you said?
Right, October 19.
Okay.
Okay. All right, I got you. Anything else? Glenn?
I'm just waiting for a second and a vote, then I'm ready to leave.
All second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
My side? Aye, Paul? My opponent, Paul? Paul came in.
Aye.
All right, okay, aye, she's there. Okay, so it's unanimous, okay. So we'll see on 19.
Okay, thank you very much. Good night.
Bye.
Night.
Good night. I just, I just cut Lenny off. I hung up on Lenny, but that's okay. All right, so there's nothing else, right?
Yep.
Anything else? No. Can I make a motion to adjourn? I'll make the motion to adjourn. Do I got a second?
All second.
All in favor? Aye, all right, that's it. All right, if you can hear me, I don't think I can hear anybody, I can't say. All right, so we're going to meet on this, on Zoom, on the 19th of October. Any questions? I'm sorry? The what? The 19th, right?
Yep, yes.
All right, any questions? We're it, that's it?
That's it.
All right, good night.
Have a good night, everybody.
Night.
Good night.
Thank you.
Bye, bye.